And remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get started, I'd like to just congratulate Brian Gilmore, the principal of Berchwood Middle School, who was awarded the 2020 Rhode Island First Year Principal of the Year. And we have a citation congratulating him on behalf of the North Providence Town Council. So congratulations from all my colleagues in government. I see our superintendents here and some school committee members. I'll give this to you guys that delivered to him. Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes for the meetings of January 7th, 2020, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to approve? So motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Juicy. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, school safety. Mayor Lombardi requests that Communications Director Ralph Nahigian address the council regarding school safety. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you very much. This request is basically to bring three other elementary schools with upgrades for the security of those schools. This money, by the way, is coming from the Kids Club account that there was an ordinance set up by this council, I think it was in 2009. So the upgrades for these schools would be $43,000 for security, $23,000 for access control upgrades, and another $6,585 for security windows. Now, this account at this point in time, and everything is in your packet, by the way, has approximately $153,048. And the total cost for all of these upgrades is approximately, well, it is, it's $73,846, which would leave us $79,202 left in that account. All the other info is in your packets. And these are the same safety and upgrade controls, as I stated, that both Maguire and Stephen Only enjoy and have been requested by our police department a number of times. So we thought it would be the time to address them. I also asked our communications director, who can give you a little more information to be here this evening, Mr. Nahigian, so if you would allow him to address this council, I would appreciate it.
So usually, in this type of situation, they usually hire a contractor to come in, do the program, figure out what it needs, what it costs, and then go out to bid for installation. Here with the communications department, we do all of this work in-house. So everything is purchased through either sole source property, sole source vendors, or anything that would have to go out to bid, we go out to bid and meet the bid process. We anticipate probably about a six-week installation. A lot of it has to occur after school hours. We need to do a lot of things in the hallway, remove ceilings in the hallway, drill and stuff like that in the building. So we usually can't do it when school is in session. The biggest thing for the access control is the police want access into these buildings during emergencies. Right now, they only, most schools only have one access control, so the police can only get into one specific door. So based on several meetings with the school safety committee, Superintendent Goho and the police department, we chose the best access doors and put that on the system. Also, the security camera portion of it will be just like the two new schools and the middle schools and the high school where the police department have full-time vision of all those. The active shooter system, which is currently installed in all the schools, right now, if that active shooter system was to be activated, the closest cameras automatically pop up and dispatch. Unfortunately, in the three elementary schools where there are no cameras, they don't have that capability. So it's certainly a very important project, and the police kind of have it on a quick timeline for us to get it done if possible.
Thank you. Mayor?
And Mr. Chairman, I can tell you this, that this is an approximate $60,000 to $70,000 savings because we're going to do this in-house. These are the things that we have taken advantage of by merging, again, the IT department with the town and the schools. And this is creating a considerable amount of savings. And I want to publicly thank our communications director, Mr. Nahigian, for what he does for us.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but I just...
Superintendent?
Thank you, President Odiello, members of the council. So the mayor gave a great overview of the request on behalf of the school department. I appreciate him putting it on the agenda so quickly on our behalf. And as he said, so we are looking to bring parity for school safety to the three elementary schools. As you know, when the Kids Club rental agreement was agreed upon, a restricted account was set up for the money to be deposited there for the use of upgrading at the three elementary schools specifically. So this fits in perfectly with the ordinance language and is something that will ensure that all of our elementary schools enjoy the appropriate safety measures at all of the schools. And as the mayor said, will not impact the budget at all, as this is separate and apart from the operating budget. So I wasn't sure if you guys had any questions about our plans, but as you know, Ralph is the best, and he's been working diligently with the school department on all the aspects of the plan. And we're very confident that we will be securing our elementary schools in a way that all of our kids can be safe and secure.
Thank you.
We appreciate your support. I should mention as well, we did bring this initiative to the facility committee last Tuesday, and the mayor sits on that committee and was extremely supportive of the initiative. So I want to thank him for that. And as I said, for expediting this so quickly on the first opportunity to get it on the agenda in front of you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Superintendent Goho? Ralph Nahigian?
I just want to, Ralph?
Yes, sir.
I'll call you tomorrow about the sound system in here.
We're waiting on, so we have to, the quotes for the actual video portion of equipment that has to be purchased, that, those quotes haven't come in yet. And unfortunately, their timeline, they're not, they don't seem to be in too much of a hurry, and there's only about three vendors we can use that do it. So we're just waiting on them, unfortunately.
And then you can work on this, the mics.
Yeah, we can adjust those mics. That's not a problem to adjust what we have here, but that's supposed to include upgrading the sound system and doing the video display for you. It's all part of the same project.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we just, we've met with them, all four, three companies here, and we're just waiting for them to come back with their quotes.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman DiLorenzo to approve the expenditure from the Kids Club account. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, Tyler and Lombard Street abandonment petition continuance. Received communication from Attorney John V. McGreen, attorney for Countryview Holdings LLC, to ask for a continuance of the petition to abandon portions of Lombard and Tyler Streets that was continued to this date. Is anyone here on this item? Dear Madam Clerk, I represent Countryview Holding LLC in connection with its petition to abandon a portion of Lombard Street and Tyler Street scheduled for hearing before the North Providence Town Council on February 4th, 2020. My client requests that this matter be continued to the March 3rd, 2020 meeting to give Countryview an opportunity to appear before the planning board on this matter prior to appearing before the North Providence Town Council. Sincerely, John V. McGreen. Do I have a motion to continue this to the March meeting?
Shallow.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four, vicualling license. Town council to consider approval of a vicualling license for the Burrito Bowl LLC, DBA The Burrito Bowl Express, 1007 Charles Street, North Providence. Is anyone here from the Burrito Bowl? Can you just state your name for the record?
Edward Timas.
Okay. Everybody has the information in their packet. Is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the vicualling license? Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
All right.
Thank you. Item number five, JL and Bowery Investments LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge. summons was delivered to Lisa Nasur, president and registered agent of JL and Bowery Investments LLC, DBA Dana's Sports Lounge, located at 1410 R. Middlespring Avenue, North Providence, R.I., for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to complete the requirements to renew said licenses. Can you just please state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is John Maney, and I represent JL Bowery Investments LLC. This is Lisa Nasur, and she is the principal of that corporation, or that LLC.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Maney?
I have a question for the clerk. Where do we stand on, what's outstanding?
We have all the requirements left met except for the taxes for the term of Providence. I believe you have it in front of you, what is owed and what was given in the last week or so. Statement number five, do you have it there? Yes. So that mark five taxes, that's the only thing they missed. Mr. President, if I may. My client has jumped through some hoops to get to this point, and we certainly appreciate the council's and the town's indulgence in this matter. As you can see, all the public safety issues, the insurances are in line. We do owe some taxes, and unfortunately, they weren't paid in a timely fashion. I understand that. I'm respectfully requesting a little bit of time. Trying to see if possible if my client could pay a portion of that on Friday and then request a one-month continuance for the next meeting for the entire balance to be paid. And if not, perhaps at that point, we'll get to the issue of a cease and desist. They do have some functions scheduled this week, Saturday, Friday and Saturday, I believe. Their hours of operation are generally Wednesday through Saturday, but sometimes on Sundays they have functions as well. Trying to do some reorganization here to get some additional time for hours of operation on a more steady basis. And basically, that's where we're at. Unfortunately, they've had some financial issues. The majority of them have straightened out. I don't mean to imply we're neglecting the town because obviously, that's one of the most important things. So if it's possible to have more time, we would certainly appreciate that.
And I appreciate the honesty, Attorney. And I will say that this council and the administration is going above and beyond to give the impression that we're a business-friendly town, and we are. Nobody wants to hurt a business, but we've been very, very fair. I don't want to cancel out the license tonight, but I think a week from tonight would be fair to have this balance paid off, considering you will have the weekend, and you did get everything in line, but, you know...
Came up a little short.
And that's the town. So, you know, I would like to entertain a motion, and if the council has any further questions, please, please, you know, give me your input, but to extend this license to a week, and if it's not paid off by Tuesday, a week from tonight, that all licenses cancel out.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of...
Seconded by Councilman Martin. Questions?
Yeah, can I just make a suggestion, see what the council's pleasure is? So if the taxes are not paid in the week, I guess my question would be, what if, and my, based on that motion, my understanding is that the licenses would cancel out, or I guess my recommendation would be the license would be suspended. And if they were to come up with the taxes in two weeks, could they, could the license be reinstated?
You're putting more contingencies, you got a one-week contingency, a two-week contingency.
So I guess, I guess I'm...
If you suspend, then you have to, you have to unsuspend. How do we do that in that one week, that seven to fourteen day window? What do we do?
So, so I guess my, my thought is, we know what the issue is. The issue is the payment of money. Someone from the Taxation Service Office can verify whether that's been paid or not. So, and again, if the council doesn't want to do it, that's fine with me. But I guess my question would be, if we were to, so this is for renewal. And my, my general concern on renewals is continued operation when there are outstanding items owed, correct? So in a week, if the taxes are not paid, they would be issued a cease and desist, and they would no longer be able to continue operations, correct? And if that were to happen, my fears are allayed because they wouldn't be operating. And so it's not, it's not a situation where they would be operating without having their license renewed. They would only owe one more checkbox, for lack of a better term. And that checkbox can be verified very easily upon payment of a check. And so I guess my thought would be, we would issue a cease and desist effective in one week from tonight. And then if that was paid after that, they would be suspended, they would not be able to operate. If that was paid after that, the suspension would be lifted upon payment, upon that payment being made. And so then we're in a situation where they don't have to wait an entire other month for them to come back on the council agenda. And, and if it was something that was discretionary, I'd be much more concerned. But because this is literally the payment of a specific dollar amount, we, someone can very easily verify whether that's happened or not.
Can I ask a question? Counselor Brooks, what are the chances that's not going to get paid in full next Tuesday? I'm just, the elephant in the room, I mean, you might, you know...
Honestly, there are two functions this weekend. I'm being overly optimistic that that'll pay the entire balance. But in reality, with the other bills of running the facility, it might only be half of that one. But we will make every effort, obviously. And I agree with Councilman Martin, or would request and support his idea that in the event the cease and desist goes into effect, that it be lifted once the entire balance is paid. So you'll be suspended and can't operate, however, you don't have to go through the whole process again because we, you know, just went through the whole process. But overly optimistic, yes, but in reality, probably half of it...
You'd like a buffer.
So you're, so you're assuming just a portion of what is owed now? It's going to be a portion of what is owed now?
That's why I was asking for the...
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I mean, we're going to make up that stuff, but with the other bills associated with the functions, but we're still going to do all of this.
I mean, the last thing this council, I mean, I played for Dana's Lounge in Little League, so, you know, the last thing this council wants to do is, is, you know, shut this business down. Councilman Martin, if Councilman Famigetti would remove his motion, withdraw his motion.
Do you want to? I will withdraw the motion.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Famigetti to withdraw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. I think barring any further discussion, the council would go along with your suggestion if you want to put it in the form of a motion.
Sure. So my motion would be that, that the entire tax bill would be owed one week from tonight, I guess, by close of business next Tuesday. If that is not paid, then a cease and desist would go in effect starting next Tuesday, the 11th. However, upon payment of the full amount, the cease and desist would be lifted by operation of payment. So that way, they would not have to come back before this council. And if they were to make a payment on the eighth day or the ninth day, upon payment and I guess transmission to our clerk, they would be able to reopen.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any further questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Consideration and indulgence, appreciate it.
Okay. Item number six, entertainment license renewal. Town council requests for a discussion and possible vote on a renewal of the four-month entertainment license granted on October 1st, 2019, for 787 Restaurant and Lounge LLC, 1270 Middlespring Avenue, North Providence. Is anyone here from 787? Please come to the mic. State your name for the record.
Liz Vasquez.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Vasquez?
Mr. President, if you, if I could take a moment, and excuse my voice, I've been a little under the weather, I just want to explain to the council a little bit more of the backstory behind this. Over the better part of the last two weeks, Lieutenant Taverozzi and I have met with Carmen from the establishment, as well as one resident who resides on Verdi Street, which is right behind the restaurant. In your packet, you'll see that there's a call log. There were 25 some odd calls. We went through every single one of them, and pretty much every single one of them was from one resident. We've met with this resident. He's a, he's a very nice man. He has a four-year, a four-month-old baby, and he's a little frazzled and he's a little, I think, worn out. He's made concessions to us. He admits that there's been absolutely no riffraff in the parking lots. He has asserted to us that, other than his concerns with the noise, he doesn't have any concerns with regards to the entertainment. We've spoken to other neighbors in the area. None of them seem to have the same concerns, at least not on the record to us. So in meeting with the restaurant ownership, as well as the concerned resident, we had come up with a plan to, or our idea, and I'll make this, I guess, in the form of a motion eventually, but our idea was to maybe extend a one-month entertainment license to give the police a little more time to do some of the sound readings, to verify whether or not noise is really an issue, as well as for us to sit down with ownership and the concerned resident to see if we can broker some sort of peace deal, for lack of a better way to put it. And I did want to state for the record that they did start doing the sound readings this weekend. There were nine done, three on Friday, three Saturday, and three Sunday. All fell with, actually, all were under what's considered tolerable. They all fell within the range of ambient noise. So I think this may be an issue. Well, I think the residents' concerns are valid. I think it may be something where a little more time to see if there's any extra little tweaks that can be done to rectify the issue might be all that's needed. And I just wanted to fill you all in on that because we just have a log, and it doesn't really explain all that, so...
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Good work, that's all the effort. Would you like to make a couple comments?
I do, actually. My name is Liz again. I, I understand that his concerns are valid. At the end of the day, you know, nobody from the police department really knows how to do the readings. They've come out, and they even tell us themselves like they're, they're not able to do the readings. Our, I don't hear the music from outside. I don't know how he possibly can hear the music from all the way to the back street. I under, you know, I understand, I have a one-year-old, and I'm a mother, and, you know, we're business owners, and, you know, we're trying to make a living as well, but I just feel like other neighbors are not complaining, it's just the same neighbor. And we're getting phone calls, saying very derogatory, calling us names and telling us to put the music down, "You effin' this," and "You freaking spick," and all this, you know. So at the end of the day, I feel like we're just being targeted. I, I, you know, I thank you honestly for, you know, hearing us out as well. You know, I just feel like, you know, it's, I don't know what else we can do at this point. We've moved our bass, we've turned down our music, we've done everything that we can possibly do. You know, we're working on soundproofing the place. You don't really hear it from downstairs. I don't know how he's able to hear it from the back. I feel like we're being targeted, and I just feel like it's not fair that we are going to have to keep coming back in here and trying to come up with a plan when in reality, he just doesn't want us there. And that's just the rest of it. You know what I'm saying? So I just feel like it's not fair for us, you know, it's not fair, if his points are, if it's valid, that, you know, he does have a, you know, a four-month-old, I understand that, and it's valid that he's, that he can't sleep or whatever. I completely understand that, but at the end of the day, I honestly don't feel like that's what it is, you know, because it's, we wouldn't be getting phone calls, calling us all sorts of names and, you know...
Well, let me apologize for that because that is not a reflection of this town, you know.
Thank you. And it's actually one more thing I want to say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We had, a few weeks ago, he had called, and we, and at this point, we didn't know who it was. All the phone calls are from the same person, but we didn't know who it was. When we did find out, the cops actually came and told us who it was. We had our head security, which I actually told him to come here today, but he's not able to do so. We had our head security go out there and actually speak to the gentleman and told him, you know, we, we understand, we're all neighbors, we're trying to, you know, we're, we're trying to make a living, and you're trying to live there, so we want to work with you. If at any point you feel like our music is loud, let us know, call us, you know, and like as a neighbor, call us, and we'll do whatever we have to do on our, on our end to, you know, to work together. He said everything was fine, and he would do that. The next day, no phone call, just the cops, automatically. So...
Okay.
It's not fair that we're doing what we have to do, and he's really isn't.
Councilman Juicy, has a question?
Yeah. Could you ever send anybody out there?
We have.
And sit with him in his, in his house?
We sent somebody out there, our head security. He actually had a conversation with him.
I mean, actually sit in the guy's house?
I don't know.
No, no, well...
I don't know who he is, you know.
I mean, if you can, if you can get something like that...
So, so Manny, if I may, so that, that's part of the reason why we're, we're trying to build in this extra month. And let me just be clear about the noise readings. They came in below what would be considered ambient noise. That means the traffic on Middlespring Avenue is actually louder than what they're picking up from the music. So there, there is some discrepancies here, and by way of history, the apartment that this gentleman lives in, my father lived in for about 10 years, I know the other residents in the building, I've spoken to them, they're not hearing the same things. So a little extra time, I think, and, and, you know, I know it's a bit inconvenient for you, but I'm thinking, and you don't all have to show up next time. If everything works out fine, we'll go, we'll meet in person, and this is just a...
I get it.
You know, it's a little investment on your part in terms of time, in terms of the long-term success of the business, and you have made accommodations. You've, you've done great. Nobody's complaining. And one other thing, this past Saturday, and I believe they all left, the gentleman did make a complaint. He sent me a text message at about 2:00 in the morning. When the police went out, they actually could hear the music coming from Dana's Lounge, which is at the end of Verdi Street. They couldn't hear any music coming from there, so there may also be some...
Dana's Lounge, it closed, or something like that?
No, they were open. They were still open. They were open till, they had to be broken up on Saturday night. So point is, is some of the noise he may be hearing may not even be from you guys. So we'll get to the bottom of it. I, I have faith in that.
If I may ask, it really is one, it's one, not that no one's, everybody's rights are all, but it's just one resident complaint, the same call list is all from one, okay.
Okay. Councilman? Yeah, Councilman Amerigi, the, the complaint's definitely from the music, or is it from people in the parking lot?
Just from the music. And that same gentleman even says that he's not seen any, any issues at all with any riffraff in the parking lot or noise in the parking lot. So if I may, in the form of a motion, make a motion that we issue a one-month license, entertainment license to 787 Restaurant, while in the meantime, allowing the police to continue doing some research, and if everything comes back positive, that we issue a full license in March.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Amerigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? Mayor?
For the record, I spent maybe a half hour behind that building this past weekend because I knew this was coming up and trying to make sure that we're all business-friendly. I wanted to make sure that we would aim before we shoot. And I didn't think it was loud at all.
That's good to know.
I did spend some time there, so I think what this young lady is saying probably is the truth, and I agree with your statement, Mr. Bacala. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman DiLorenzo?
Other, excuse me, other than this 25 calls from this one resident, have the police been there for any other reason?
Not at all.
Just some, if I may, just some, the alarm went off on a couple occasions when they weren't there, things like that.
So nothing major, nothing going on at the back yard?
No, no, not call-based, no.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, master plan for Senedale Village. Shane Pichay requests to appear before the council to present a petition from certain citizens of North Providence, as well as discuss the overall master plan for Senedale Village with regard to traffic, safety, walkability, economic climate, and parking.
Good evening, members of the council. Shane Pichay, Eight Robert Drive, North Providence. First, I'd like to thank you all for having us here this evening to speak on a few matters. What you're being passed out right now is a petition put together, basically, to kind of get, to come in unified. Obviously, a lot of the people in the business community here in Senedale are very busy and don't always have the time to make meetings. So, what we did is, we got together, kind of got, you know, pretty much everybody we could get in contact with. I got to say, I don't have anyone that's not in agreement with coming up with a complete master plan and addressing some of the concerns in Senedale. The biggest concern being, and I know that the mayor addressed it, I saw it in the breeze this past week, is the traffic flow. And last year, we had met with DOT, members of Ripta, and other members of the state to discuss solving some of the problem that we have here. I can tell you that there's not one business owner or property owner in the area who is opposed to changing the traffic and, you know, resetting it back to what it was before the bypass was put in. Obviously, it was quite some time ago, but everyone will agree that a two-way street is much more conducive for business. Not only that, I cited this once before the council, but I'd like to cite it again. I have a little excerpt. This is from the historic Rhode Island Historic Preservation Commission. And one of the statements they make when they discuss Senedale, this is on page 21 of their findings, you know, this is one of the quotes here. I'd like to put it into the record. It says, "Senedale, as it looks today, has lost much of its village quality and sense of place along the river due to the loss of its mills and the construction of the Senedale Bypass, which routes westbound traffic around Senedale Business District, and tends to fragment and isolate sections of Senedale from each other." So, you know, "The commercial area on Smith Street has several buildings of architectural interest and value, but poor signage and inappropriate siding tend to obscure the area's potential." So, this is a comment that was made and found by the Rhode Island Historic Commission. The bypass is definitely a concern. There's not one business owner that I spoke to, especially, I'll point out in the crowd, our oldest business that I know of in the town is Yacht Club Soda. They've been here over 100 years. Not one of the businesses supports the idea of the bypass. Anyone that's been here longer than the bypass always says that it was much better, you know, when Senedale was a true business district. So, one of the things we'd like to talk about, and I know that the mayor's already been, you know, working diligently, but I think it's just to get it out there and get people moving, is doing, is getting an engineer to come in, complete a full traffic study of the whole area. I will say that I've walked it many times. I have aerial photos. It makes a lot of sense. It definitely looks like it's doable. Based on the meeting the mayor and I had with the state last year, it really doesn't look like it would be a huge expense. And the good news is, it's a, because they're state roads, it'd be federally funded. Basically, the, and I'll have the mayor, I'll ask him to speak on this if I'm misstating, but as far as I remember, the state basically said that if the town would cover the cost of the engineering, that the state would work to get us into the tip and, you know, actually make the project happen. It would be at zero cost to the taxpayer. So, the only investment we would have to make is the actual engineering portion of it. And I know that we do have some grant money. I don't know what the, you know, if it's even possible to use those funds towards this, but I think if we're going to spend any money in the beautification and in the updating of the area, that we should really come in with a unified plan. So, that's why I went around and got to pretty much every business that I could, explain to them, you know, what I was going to do, and ask them if they'd like to, you know, be represented, you know, on this evening that I'm speaking, to please sign. And so, that's what you have in front of you. So, traffic, obviously, is one of the biggest concerns. The other thing is safety. We'd love to see Senedale become a walkable village. I've said it, you know, many times, anybody that was willing to listen to me, that I think we have something great here that could be similar to a Potuxa Village, or a Wickert Village, or any of the other historic villages that you see in Rhode Island. And I, actually, on a second note, I'd love to commend the two councilmen down in the district, too. You guys have done a great job in cleaning up that Mariville area. And we'd like to try to bring some of that down here to Senedale. Walkability is definitely a problem, not because you can't walk it, but the sidewalks are in some rough shape. So, that's one of the things I'd like to be able to address. We had a woman fall last year who was just walking down the street, took a really bad fall. And unfortunately, due to the traffic pattern, it took quite a while for the emergency medical response to get to her. Had it been the way we're proposing, they would have been there probably, literally, minutes earlier than it took to go around. So, these are the types of things that we're looking at, you know, regarding the public safety. So, and obviously, they would look much better. Also, you know, one of the things, just to touch upon, and I'd like to see if we can, you know, continue this dialogue regarding economic development. I've spoken to some of you members of the council individually, but I think there's some things that we can do with some really nice tax reform, given village areas, Senedale, Mariville, our historic areas, where one of the biggest problems is, you have, you know, we kind of base our tax rate on the zoning, in a way, right? So, you have a residential rate, and then you have a commercial rate, and then in some cases, we have an industrial rate, but not too much of that, obviously. However, commercial village is kind of a hybrid of residential and commercial. So, there's certain things that you're not allowed to do in a commercial village zone. The problem is, we get taxed at a rate similar to those on Mineral Spring Avenue. So, for instance, on Mineral Spring Avenue, you can have drive-throughs, and you can have certain other types of businesses that will yield a higher return on a rental space or a property, and they don't really have any residential portion of it. So, one of the things that I've discussed many times, and I know all the businesses are in favor of it, and the property owners, is maybe we have a village tax rate, which is a combination. So, if you have a residential rate is X, you have a commercial rate is Y. We find a commercial village rate that's maybe somewhere in the middle, to make it a little more competitive for mom and pop. You know, obviously, these areas are difficult, especially given the, you know, the climate that it is now, one-way streets, lack of parking, all those different things. So, to allow these businesses to compete with different areas, I think, is an important thing to do. So, that's one of the things we'd like to look at, is a commercial village rate. And also, I've met with Tom Kane and had some discussions about this, and I might have spoken to a few of you about this, regarding the tangibles. Unique thing about the tangibles that I learned, according to our assessor, the tangible tax budget, about 90% of the small businesses make up only 10% of the budget. So, when you look at that in the grand scheme of things, you look at it and say, "Well, how does that make sense?" So, after discussing it with him, basically, the tangibles, which is really kind of what saddles a lot of businesses, see, it's like an inventory tax. We all know what it is. Problem is, if mom and pops trying to compete, or even, you know, retail businesses, they're getting killed, especially against Amazon and things like that. So, we see brick and mortar losing. If we were able to come up with a plan that we say exempted the first $100,000, I'm just throwing an arbitrary number, but we exempted the first $100,000 of tangibles, and we maybe raised the rate on the back end, and again, there's some work that's to be done in the state, and I'm familiar with that, but I'm just throwing a concept out there, we would become economically viable in a much more desirable area for businesses to come in, because now you could basically say to someone, "Hey, come to North Providence," and essentially, 90% of your small businesses are going to be, you know, forgiven from tangibles, and you raise on the backside, because the biggest numbers are being paid by everything that has to do with infrastructure, Verizon, Cox, Narragansett Bay, you know, National Grid, because they're paying on the poles and all those utility, you know, the different types of things. So, their tangible budgets are millions and millions of dollars, where when you go into a small business, and at the end of the year, they're getting hit with a $5,000 bill, you know, you say, "Oh, it's not a lot," but it is, you know? We got a business across the street. You got to make a lot of, you got to flip a lot of eggs to make five grand. So, if there was a way, and again, some of these businesses are very old, why am I paying, you know, I buy this furniture, I pay the sales tax on it, and I'm not sitting here to go on a whole tax thing, but, you know, if the thing's 20 years old, and I'm still getting killed on a chair that I bought 20 years ago, it just, it really doesn't jive, and it doesn't make sense. So, I think we've done a great job. I mean, I can tell you that in the last, you know, six years at least, the town is definitely, is leaps and bounds above where we were in the past. But I think that now we can get to another level, and we really should push through. And I think that areas like Senedale, Mariville, you know, they're areas that have a lot of history. They have a lot of, you know, remnants of the past, but then also can bring us into the future. And I think what happens is, these areas, they go down. I mean, you guys from the child street, you know what happens, you know, the same thing over here. Time goes on, the cost gets high, it runs people out of town, and then before you know it, we're filled with vacant properties. Now, Mineral Spring Avenue looks great. It's booming. We got buildings coming down. We got buildings going up. We got a lot of great things going on. This is a very tough area, okay? We knew coming down here that we were fighting an uphill battle. We knew what all the problems were, but we looked and said, "All right, well, we want to solve them." So, that's really what this is about tonight, traffic. Like I said, the safety and the walkability is an important thing to make a village thrive. We want to talk about the economic climate, and then obviously, one of the other issues is, we want to talk about parking, because we all know that that's an issue.
Councilman?
Thank you, Councilman. What would you like to see, traffic-wise?
Traffic-wise?
Imagine the breeze, last week, I think the mayor brought it up, that to make a left at the light on Mineral Spring to come through the bypass here. You know, talking with John, who's a friend of my son, he was a good kid when he was a kid.
Yep.
You know, I'd like to see it come all the way down.
Right.
Past Yacht Club, past Robinson.
Correct.
Be able to go either way that you want.
Correct.
What would be your...
In a perfect world, I think every street should be a two-way street. I think that, based on, you know, size, we can make it happen. I think on Smith Street here, we would put in a two-way. We would have parking on one side, okay? So, it would have to be on the opposite side. We would keep that one indent, you know, across from Town Hall to keep that walkable and keep the front of Town Hall clear. But you'd have parking on one side. You create a two-way street. The Senedale Bypass becomes a two-way street the whole entire way. You'd gain all that parking in that one free lane. The other lane that's, you know, behind us, so where the mayor was talking about, where you'd be able to take a left on Mineral Spring, that's a three-lane road. So, if we made that two-way traffic, in that third lane, we'd actually put the buses there, so they would pull off. They'd be out of the way. We'd take them. This is a bad stop. I mean, anybody that comes through Senedale understands it.
So, you're saying you want to take the buses away from here and bring them here?
The stop would be there. They can still maintain the stop, but not the waiting. See, the problem is, is they stack in that area. And what it does is, it backs up traffic. It creates a problem. And I, it was, I couldn't tee it up any better, but when I met with Greg Nordine, he's the planning director for Ripta, and Ripta's on board. They were like, "Listen, we'll go wherever you want. We'll work with you. However you want to do it, we're here. We're here to help the community." I said to him, I said, "This stop's going to cost you about 50 grand a year, I reckon, because I watch it every day where these buses collide into each other." And literally, as we were talking, a bus came in and wiped the mayor off another bus. And he's, you know, and they said, "Oh, we got to look into this." The problem is, when you get three of them stacked up at that bus stop, and they have to wait in that area because of the one-way street, they have to get off on that side of the road. So, if we had the three lanes, and we could actually make its own bus lane, we'd be dropping everybody. We could put the stop over there, and you could queue up three buses in that side lane with no problem. I mean, you know, again, there's logistics to work out, but if you look at it from a big...
Yeah, because I'm not so sure that the buses can get to that point.
Sure they could.
Swing around.
Sure they could. If Mineral Spring was two-way, like we're talking about, so the buses come up now, and they take a left onto Mineral Spring. They take a left onto Mineral Spring. They take a right onto the bypass. They park right there. Or, they can come, you know, they'd be able to come from any side at that point, once the streets are two-way. They could come up the bypass the other way and pull in evenly. So, there is some engineering, don't get me wrong. However, in the scope of, you know, cost, when it comes to, you know, DOT, we'd be a small budget here to do what we're looking for. I mean, DOT's, you know, they're doing 10, 15, 20 million dollar, 50 million dollar things. I think we're anywhere between, you know, just, again, I'm throwing out there, just kind of looking at it. I mean, five and 10 million, I think we can really do something and solve, you know, a lot of the problems down here.
Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah, good. Councilman?
Shane, right outside here, outside the Town Hall. If we ran two buses, let's say, going opposite of each other, opposite directions.
Yep.
With parking on one side, you think that would fit?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
But you have to, you have to take the bump outs.
Yeah, so you'd lose, you'd lose the one bump out on this side of the street. You'd have to remove that. You'd leave the other one, so no one would park, so you could, you know, there's some, there's some things that you'd have to do there. Also, right here, you'd have to take out what they should have, I mean, at the Rotary, they brought that curb out. That curb belongs, if you look at the lights, that curb belongs back in front of the Realty Building here. So, you widen that as well. And now, you'd be able to actually, see, the Rotary, and I think you came with me, you know, actually, when we met with the DOT, and we went to the state, they admitted, look, when we built this, it was kind of new. We were just getting into the Rotary game, roundabout, they don't like Rotary. They were in a roundabout game, and it wasn't well thought out. There were certain things that they could have done differently. The problem we have here is, you have one ways filtering in. They don't, it doesn't work when you have one ways going into a roundabout. So, if we cut, you know, around where my end building is here, you would cut those two kind of bumps that go around, so that you'd be able to come through, and you'd be able to wrap around and hit the whole area. Again, logistically, if you look at it from an aerial photo, and you say, "Wow, that makes a lot of sense," because when Engine 3 came down Smith Street that day when the woman fell last summer, they literally came here, and instead of going around and just pulling right out over here, which would take literally 20 seconds, they had to go around through traffic. I mean, when you look at it from a public safety standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to be able to have the accessibility. And obviously, from an economical standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world. You know, but again, we need engineers. I mean, I, you know, I'm not, by no means an engineer. I can come up with an idea, but I think if we got the right people in place and everyone's supportive, I think we can do really great things here.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to refer this matter to our finance committee, and have our finance chair work with Town Purchasing Agent Mike Mooney on a possible RFP for an engineer.
And if I may add this, an RFP has already been drafted last year from Dave Westcott. I apologize. I should have brought copies for you. So, the RFP is ready to go, if, you know, if everyone's on board. I obviously want to make sure the mayor is...
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. Mayor?
Comments, Mr. Chairman? I know we did talk with the state a year ago, but just to report to the council, in talking with the state, I met with them maybe three times in the last three months. And the reason why we're making that proposal to make a left, that's probably the first step and the easiest thing for us to do, to try to address some of the traffic and our public safety needs, because anytime there's an issue here, or on Wenaskatucket, the first maybe half mile down, or Smith Street, all the public safety, police, fire, rescue have to come around the bypass and come down. There's a small portion of property just to the left of Shane's building that the state knows that they could take, maybe about 15 feet, 18 feet, and make that a roundabout perfect and ready for maybe the second phase, and that may be for the two lanes. So, the reason why we were proposing this now and talking with Mr. Prestauer from the state, is that it could be the quickest and easiest way. And they do want a plan from us that they could approve or make some changes to make Smith Street two-lane. I agree for the shopping or the business aspect of the neighborhood needs to be two-way. You only be able to have maybe Parkin on one side, but that's going to, we should have some numbers on this, probably within the next couple of weeks. And the other thing I need to tell you is that they also agreed last week that they're going to repave from Waterman Avenue coming around the bypass, where you could rattle your right teeth loose coming around that corner there. So, that's all going to get repaved in the spring. And the two, how can I say, the two covers in the middle of the road there in front of the gym, they're down maybe about an inch and a half, two inches. They're going to repair that also, that'll be taken care of. But I agree that maybe the Orleans Committee meeting will attend and try to get the right, he gave me three or four names of engineering companies that would be perfect to redesign this area. So, maybe we put it out to bid. I'm sure they'll bid on it, and at that point in time, we'll make a decision.
Thank you.
But just wanted to report to you what's going on now.
Thank you. Dr. Buchi, you got a comment?
Buchi, I come at this from a little different point of view. I'm all in favor of pro-Senedale, definitely. But I want to just bring out a couple of ideas. 100 years ago, there was a big celebration in Senedale, and that was the celebration of the dedication of that World War I monument. Hundreds of people came. That monument's over on the intersection of Wenaskatucket and Smith Street, right by the bypass, okay? That's the doughboy. The date was May 30, 1920. This May 30 will be the centennial. We could have a great celebration of the dedication of that monument, because I happened to come across the, well, I was with Tom Green, the town historian, last Friday, and I happened to, he had the actual brochure of the celebration. So, then I read it, and I saw the exact date. I said, "There's a centennial coming up. That would be a great time to celebrate the people of North Providence and all that we have given, and the men, the 13 men that are honored by that doughboy statue." And then, doing a little bit of research, I came across one of the soldier, one of the sailor, he was a 17-year-old boy. His name was Charles Parkin, and he begged his mother to be able to join the military. So, he was only 17. She had to sign for him. He, she said, "Okay, you can be on the Coast Guard." However, he got placed on a transport ship that would go across the Atlantic, and in 1918, that ship was sunk by the Germans. And all the 111 Coast Guard men on that ship, as well as the rest of the crew and everybody, they died. The thing, the ship sunk in three minutes, the report I read. And anyway, so, when I take the school kids, I took six classes of school kids on the history walk last year, and I've taken the public several times. walk last year, and I've taken the public several times on the history walk around Senedale, and we stop at that monument, and it is a powerful, important place for us to remember. It's our public monument, it's our heritage. And so, we see that monument every day as we pass by. Many of us don't, might not even notice it. I didn't really notice it that much until I started to do the history walk. So it cannot really be appreciated, in my opinion, unless you can walk to it, unless you can go there and you can read the inscription, and it is dedicated to the men of North Providence who pledged their lives for worldwide liberty, and that's engraved. And so, I hope to continue the walks, but I think that that centennial, that struck me as an important date, maybe the town could have something there. I don't know, but I wanted to bring that out, and I bring that forward, because I think it's part, it should be part of our plan. But I saw a Senedale plan, a plan for celebrations as well, and walkability is also important. So when I do the history walk, there's, I have to plan it, in fact, the mayor has given, oh, okay, the mayor has provided police escort every time I've done it, or when I walk with the school kids, we had police assistance as well. It would be nice to be able to do it without that, if I had a proper signal, I mean, I'd love having it, maybe I should always have that, but in addition to that, have signals, have more crosswalks, because I've walked that Senedale, and it's a little bit tricky. So, as far as the plan goes as well, that Shane mentioned, I have read David Westcott's plan, and within the last couple of months, I did review it, and I, as I recall, he asked that many groups be involved in planning. And so, this is my idea on this. The plan could be formulated by and include the views of many different types of people. The people could include those who live in the high-rises, the Senedale Manor, the, both of the high-rises, I forget the other, the other name, but could be the people who live in private homes, apartments, those who frequent the businesses, the business owners as well, and the people of North Providence who care about our community, maybe some of the members of different boards. There's a broad spectrum, so that we can continue to enjoy living in North Providence, our great community, and want our children to want to live here and continue to enjoy it. So I just wanted to put in my, a couple of thoughts on that, and hopefully, we can maybe have more celebrations, more people coming into Senedale to attend, whether it be the monument celebration, we could do a Founder's Day. North Providence was founded in June 13th, 1765. We could do Frank C. Angel's birthday, his birthday's in March, March 9th. Okay, so, but I mean, in particular, when I do the walk, that monument, the Doughboy statue on the big rock, that rock that came from Mr. Angel's farm on Angel Avenue, and the rock, and then the beautiful Doughboy statue, I think we need to celebrate our people and all that we've given, all that they've given, and that we have from them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your research is always appreciated. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The ayes have it.
If I may, just one second. Shane, do you mind coming back up? If I were to, I know you're very passionate about this, and I think it's excellent, I'm actually from Senedale, I grew up on Ferncliff Ave, and you know, we're very passionate about revitalizing the villages. If I give you a little homework assignment, are you up to it, since we're going to go to the Finance Committee anyways?
Absolutely.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to have a representative from the Senedale Business District, specifically Mr. Pichay, appear at next month's Finance Committee meeting with some facts and figures about tangible taxes, including but not limited to a comparison amongst the towns and cities of Rhode Island, so we can start to address where we might be able to improve.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Maton.
Could I ask that we also make a request of our tax collector to provide us with the breakdown of the tangibles? As a, as a son of a longtime small business owner, I know my father spent many tax years cursing about tangible taxes, so I would love to see that breakdown as far as the, where, you know, the ninety percent versus the ten percent and that kind of thing, because when you said it, I mean, I don't know if it's viable, but to me, it sounds like something.
Fair fucking ask.
For sure.
Okay, one second. So, motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Amerigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's been made by Councilman Maton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Bacala?
Are there any other towns that will do, that do that, whether you said Patuxent Village and this and that, is there something we can at least look at?
Yeah, so when it comes to the tangibles, I will say this, 2020 is an election year, and I have shared this concept with another person in another community, and I guarantee, I won't say who it is, but he's running for mayor in another community, I guarantee he's going to, he's going to, this is going to be a big portion of it, because when I told him, he said, "Oh, my God," you know, he started looking, and he did more research, and we've spoken, he's like, "Oh, this is like unbelievable." And I happen to know that they're Director of Economic Development in that community, and, you know, we were having a conversation at a political event, and they went nuts over it, and they couldn't, you know, and when they started looking into it, they said, "Wow, this is viable," so I think we should beat them to the punch on it. But I don't know, offhand, I can't say for sure that I know other communities are doing it. However, based on the research that I've done and the information that I received, to me, it's like, it's really a no-brainer. I mean, eventually, it's going to get back to the taxpayer in some way, because if, again, if you, you know, I'm using numbers, if you exempted the first hundred thousand, and you just raised the rate, you'll actually probably increase your budget overall. Now, again, that takes, you know, legislation, you go to the state, but I'm confident in the ability of all you guys in the administration that you can make it happen, and I think you should be the leader. We're five square miles, this is my problem, we're five square miles, we should be a pinnacle community. There's no doubt that we can be pristine in every way that, you know, we do, and we've gotten it. I mean, you know, Camp Me and Mineral Spring Avenue, so many great things of, you know, and I'll throw out something else, like the high school football field. I've offered, I'll help, I'll do whatever I can, I'll brew any resources that I have, but we've got to get a budget, we've got to figure it out, but that's like...
All right, we got to stick to tangible taxes, so.
You've done your homework, I'll give you that.
This conversation for the Finance Meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Shane.
Okay, item number eight, Town Council Meetings for 2020. Council President requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the dates of the remaining regularly scheduled monthly Town Council meetings for calendar year 2020 and a possible amendment slash change to those dates. I put this on the agenda during this month every year, and I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone the July meeting due to the fact that it falls on the day after the Fourth of July, and a lot of people are out of town. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Juasty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, Oversight of Board Decisions. Councilman De Lorenzo requests discussion and possible vote on the oversight of board decisions in the Town of North Providence. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I respectfully would like to pass this item off the agenda.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman De Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Maton, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10, Resignation Letter. Received letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Nicholas Narducci III from the North Providence Zoning Board. Please be advised that I, that unfortunately, I am hereby officially tendering my resignation from the Town Zoning Board. I have moved out of town, otherwise I would gladly continue to serve. I do thank you for this opportunity, please let me know if I can be of any assistance in the transition. Sincerely, Nicholas Narducci III. Do I have a motion to accept that letter?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Maton, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, Board Appointments. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote With Regard to Appointments To Be Made To The Following Boards Due To The Resignation Of Member In The Previous Agenda Items. North Providence Zoning Board. Do I have a motion to appoint? Dawn Morano to the North Providence Zoning Board?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fay McGeady, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Claims Submitted. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote With Regard To The Claims Received From The Following. Beverly Corville, 23 Born Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Christopher Boyle, 21 Alexander Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Il Fennello Restaurant, Anthony Lanny owner, 16 Josephine Street, North Providence. Do I have a motion to accept the claims? Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman De Lorenzo, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 13, Claims Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote With Regard To The Claims Committee Report To Be Presented By Councilman Juisty.
We had, we had six claims. The first one was for Madonna Micaletti, it was for eight thousand, two hundred, twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. That claim was denied. Nancy Mendez was a thousand dollars, that was sent to our DPW Director to be sent to the insurance companies for the, for the people paving the streets. We got a claim from Kelly Reese for a tire for two hundred, forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Motion was made to pay that. We got another tire from Chris Boyle for two hundred, ninety-one dollars and two cents, and motion was made to pay that, two hundred, ninety-one dollars and two cents. We got a motion from, we got a claim from Il Fennello Restaurant for four thousand, six hundred and one dollars. That's being held for further info. And our last claim was from Beverly Corville. That claim is going to run around forty to fifty thousand, so that's out of our hands, that's, we're holding that pending what's going to happen with that.
Thank you, Chairman. Do I have a motion to accept the Claims Committee Report?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman De Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The ayes have it.
Item number 14, Finance Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Action With Regard To The Finance Committee Report To Be Presented By Councilman Amerigi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The typed-up Finance Committee meeting is, report is in your package or in front of you. In short, what the committee decided was, with regards to establishing some sort of assistance fund for youth sports, and particularly for the families in enrollment, that it was best not to burden the taxpayers with it. There's a real, I've had an outpouring, and we've had an outpouring of support, so we're going to approach this from a private angle with grant writing and fundraising. However, in the meeting, there were some concerns expressed or some confusion over some of the facilities use with regards to youth sports. So the committee is recommending and making a motion that the Town Council send correspondence to the School Department, Parks and Recreation, and the Facilities Department to ask them to report back to the council what fees and/or in-kind services they make the youth sports leagues provide them for facility use.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Do I have a motion to accept the Finance Committee Report? Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions?
There was a, there was a second motion. Okay. The recommendation, was that the motion, or was it just to accept the report?
You want to, you want to read it?
You want me to reread it?
No, no, that was, no.
That takes care of it?
Yeah.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 15, Ordinance Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Action With Regard To The Ordinance Committee Report To Be Presented By Councilman Fay McGeady. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 29th, we had an ordinance committee meeting, there were three items on the agenda. Two were continued to the next meeting due to Lieutenant Tavarozi's unavailability that night. One was really the major and the crux of the ordinance committee meeting, that was the discussion and vote on the firefighter's cost-of-living trust fund. This has been before the council, it first came before the council last month, went to the ordinance committee. This is, in effect, the town establishing a trust fund for the cost-of-living adjustments that we provide to retired firefighters. We thoroughly went through two major documents that were submitted to us, drafted by Attorney Rodeo on behalf of the administration. One is an ordinance allowing us to create the trust, and the other is the trust agreement itself. The substance of the ordinance and the trust agreement were sound, and it seemed like there were significant agreement between all parties, including members of local Union 233. The drafting that we did and the workshopping mainly dealt with making sure language was consistent and clear, and Attorney Rodeo has been compliant with our requests. He has changed the documents to conform with our requests. I'd like to thank the ordinance committee for their work on this. We were working on this for about an hour and a half, and I thank our legal counsel, Mark Welch, for his help as well on this, and we were able to get it done in a quick amount of time, so we could get this put forward and into effect. That being said, I know we have both items on the agenda after this, so.
Do I have a motion to accept the ordinance committee report?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 16, Resolution 20-002. Discussion and Vote On Resolution 20-002 Creating The Town Of North Providence Firefighter Cost-of-Living Adjustment Trust Fund. Do I have a motion to...
This one, continue. This one, make a motion to continue for the next month's meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to continue. Resolution 20-002 To Next Month's Meeting. Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 17, Ordinance Introduction, Discussion and Possible Vote To Introduce Ordinance Number 20-002 Amending The North Providence Code Of Ordinances To Add A Section Entitled Establishment Of The North Providence Firefighter Cost-of-Living Adjustment Investment Board. I'd like to entertain a motion to advertise the trust fund ordinance for public hearing next month.
So moved.
A motion's been made by Councilman Fay McGeady, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Juisty. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Not at this issue, Mr. Chairman, and just want to ask a question only because of the outpouring of support from people that would like to serve on some of the boards and commissions. So we have two openings on the, on the...
Planning.
Planning Board, because I was just talking to Dawn, I'm sorry. But, and two individuals have shown, actually, four individuals have shown interest. Does this have to come to you, and these people approved by a letter? Or could I present these two names to you now, even though it wasn't on the agenda?
Yeah, it's going to be on an agenda.
All right, no problem. Only because I know they have a meeting scheduled, and sometimes have to cancel the meeting because of, they don't have enough people to serve on the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get it to you for the March meeting.
Thank you.